Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 19th, 2019 work session legislative meeting in the North Hills School District. If we can all rise for a moment of silence and salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this evening we have a student performance. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Shawn Clunin and the high school choir, who's going to perform for us this evening.
You're actually going to start with the National Anthem. I probably should have had you stay standing.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Our combined high school ensemble, the Wind Symphony, the Wind Ensemble, the Chamber Strings, and the high school choirs all do a collage concert in October where we share the stage together and do a couple of combined pieces. The North Hills Singers will be in. We're going to do an arrangement of the text "Come Thou Fount of Every Blessing," but it is an appellation, folk tune, written by a man who plays hammered dulcimer. And our soloist will be Saffron Wett.
Come thou Fount of every blessing, tune thy heart to know thy grace; streams of mercy never cease in call for songs of loudest praise. In the steadfast pool of ocean, in the sudden rain that falls, there's a wheel in constant motion, there's an ancient voice that calls. In the power of a river, all our faith becomes a boat. If we are to be delivered, we must watch and work and hope. There's no final destination, rivers bend and open wide; elements of all creation join the never-ending tide. Teach me some melodie sonnet, some bright flaming tongues of love; to praise the ground we walk upon it, round a very redeeming love. Bring our lives and souls together here on earth where we do roam; benefactors of a treasure, make us worthy of our home. Come thou Fount of every blessing, tune thy heart to know thy grace; streams of mercy never cease in call for songs of loudest praise.
Before we go, we would like to sing the North Hills Alamoater.
We're united sons and daughters, bound in love and praise for Thee. North Hills High are alamoater; ever faithful we will be. Alamoater we shall treasure, memories that never die; though the years go swiftly by, will be true to North Hills High.
Thank you, Mr. Clunin. Thank you, students. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, before we get to board member comments, I just have a couple announcements. Ms. Cazara is attending on the phone this evening. Sandy, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, great. And also, I also want to introduce our two new student reps to the board, Hannah Schuley and Ellie Fleischer. They're both 11th graders. So, welcome. We can now move on to board member comments. Does anybody have any? Ellie.
I'd just like to request that next year when we make our board calendar, I should look at this more closely, that we have a meeting closer to the start of the school year. And in coming up, we have a couple of months where we only have one meeting, and I would like to see us go back to having two meetings a month.
It's already done. The draft that Lori and I haven't worked on and making sure that Mr. Witherall is also available, that's exactly that.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from board? That being said, I assume that a lot of you are here this evening to discuss kindergarten. And High Cliff, just to let you know, those of you who signed up to speak, you will certainly have your opportunity to do so. We welcome that. I do intend on, just to give you a heads up, I do intend on entertaining a motion to option two for the kindergarten class that is on the agenda. And as far as High Cliff goes, we are addressing the concerns of the class sizes as we speak, but that's in motion, so that's not something that we're just going to keep discussing. Am I correct in saying that?
The TA can add it.
Okay, so, okay. So, that being said, I just want to give you all a heads up with that. Also, we had an executive session this evening at the boardroom, and we met there to discuss personnel and other matters that were required under executive session. So, that being said, we can now move on to public comments on the agenda items only. Lori, I don't have a list, but...
There are a few people that did sign up.
Okay, all right. So, if you don't mind, I'll just call them by name. I just ask if, for those of you that are going to speak, if you're all speaking on the same subject, if it's a little repetitive of the initial speaking, you can just suggest that you either agree with it or you don't agree with it. But we would like to keep the comments to a maximum of three minutes if that's possible. So, we have some folks who have signed up here. We can start with the fourth grade class, it looks like, and then Matt Major?
Major, yes.
I'm sorry, Major?
Yes.
Okay. If you need time to begin, just to state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely.
And make the comments.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Matt Major. I live at 413 Stanford Avenue. The reason I'm here this evening is to speak on behalf of High Cliff 4th Grade, and also I have an incoming daughter going into kindergarten. So, I would like to say thank you to the district and to the board for stepping up and starting to handle this situation. The reason I felt that I wanted to speak this evening is I am an educator myself, with 15 years of experience in teaching. I have my master's in curriculum instruction and also have my K-12 administrative papers. With that, as I was looking at the situation, and thank you for starting to handle it, however, I was kind of baffled, looking at it from all points of view, from a parent perspective, being concerned about my child going from 19 children in a classroom to 27, and the loss of a teacher for instruction purposes. I understand that there are classroom issues with enrollment increasing, and I know that you guys have put in motion the hiring of the teacher assistant. And I appreciate and applaud you for that. However, as we look at education, I feel that this is one place where a lot of people try and look at it more of like a business, or the more we can get, how many children we can get into a classroom with a maximum cap of 27 students in a classroom, I just feel that that is not an appropriate policy or school board policy for elementary level. Maybe at middle school and possibly high school, however, with the developmental and the cognitive ability of nine and 10-year-olds, it's pretty difficult to manage a classroom, being that I've been in that position with 27 students and having to teach a lesson, give directions, provide the activity for the learning, and then step up and be able to get to each child on an individual basis, not including students with special circumstances such as individual education plans, specially designed instruction or 504 plans. So, with that, I am hopeful, and it is, I'm here on behalf of my family and my wife Lisa Major, we are hopeful that hiring the teaching assistant will help, however, the overcrowding of the classroom is not going to be alleviated by adding another adult into the classroom. I'm not certain if there has been any consideration of adding a possible trailer or mobile classroom by chance, but that was one of the solutions I thought could help to essentially get some of those students out of that overcrowded classroom and help with the educational setting. The other part that I wanted to just ask the board to do is please reconsider reevaluating the policy with 27 students for the cap. As you possibly do your due diligence and research, any class size teacher-to-student ratio, you will certainly see that 27 is not an ideal number for student to teachers. So, with that, that is my opinion and also educational experience, speaking on behalf of 4th Grade and overall. As for the kindergarten, and I'm certain we're going to kind of address this this evening, as I said, I do have a 4th grader who is coming into High Cliff next, I'm sorry, a kindergartner who's coming into High Cliff next year. And with that said, education is the foundation, and if we shorten that, even in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, what have you, those foundations aren't going to be in place, and it's detrimental to their education. I understand that it is a financial struggle. I was trying to figure out the numbers, and once again, I'm not a board member, I'm not, you know, the accountant of the district, but I obviously was trying to figure out sub-rate, being able to provide substitutes for these students who are currently in kindergarten, and allowing the teachers to step out of the classroom to do the assessments. And with that, my rough numbers are around $16,000, and I don't know that that is 100% accurate, but to shorten 70 hours of education for a kindergarten class or a student is a bit much, if that's the way we're looking at it from a financial standpoint.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you. Next, is it Elsie Tobek? If you, again, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Allison Tobek. I live at 111 Laurelwood Drive. I am a former North Hills teacher, so I do recognize many of you, and I'm really coming here on behalf of incoming kindergarten parents. I have a lot of friends. I have an incoming kindergartner myself. I have two boys that attend McIntyre Elementary already, and I have two more coming in the future, so next year, my third son will be attending kindergarten. I specifically wanted to voice my concern on the proposed calendar for next year. Option number one has kindergartners being dismissed eight days prior to the rest of the district. I am aware that this has certain benefits for the district, but I do not think that these benefits outweigh the negatives. The biggest concern for me, I know Mr. Major was talking about the education of it, but I feel more strongly about the childcare. Obviously, a kindergartner cannot stay home by themselves for those eight days, so where are they supposed to go? The camps that are offered in this area, don't start that early. Older siblings that might be in high school, they're not home. So, daycares, okay, they're not going to offer a spot for two weeks of care. Childcare workers, will they offer a spot for two weeks? Even if you have a friend that might watch your child, the going rate for a babysitter, I babysit some other children, is $50 a day at a minimum. Okay, so roughly, we have maybe 300 kindergartners, and that might be on the low end. You take 300 kindergartners, eight days, $50 a day, you're at $120,000. Is that beneficial to our community to spend, as a community, we're spending $120,000 so that these kids, so that the district can have $20,000 saved? So, my other concern too is that families won't be able to even find somebody to watch their children. We're talking about 300 kids that all of a sudden need two weeks' worth of care. So, most parents then are going to end up having to take off work, which is even more costly, or it might put some kindergartners at risk of not being in a safe place. So, I think that you have taken a drastic change, instead of looking at some maybe less drastic options to make the assessments work more efficiently. That is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Appreciate it. Next, Colleen Roth.
Hi, my name is Colleen Roth. I live at 117 Brookmead Drive, and I'm here in regards to the 4th Grade class size at High Cliff. And I really, pretty much just echo a lot of what Matt said, but I'm here today to just kind of be the voice for my son, because he's nine. And I feel like, you know, we've had great success here at the North Hills School District. I have a 6th grade daughter, we've had fantastic teachers, we've had wonderful experience. My son loves school, he loves to learn. And you can imagine how hard it was for me the first couple of weeks of school, as a result of these larger class sizes and the new departmentalization, where they're now switching for three classes a day, and he's carrying around this giant binder all day. And he comes home, and he's overwhelmed, and his head is spinning, and he's talking about being rushed, shoving things into this binder, because these kids are in such a large class, they're hurried, it's overcrowded, it's been stressful for him. And as a parent, it's heartbreaking to hear your kid come home and say, "I'm not having a good time in school. This is overwhelming." So, I just want to give that perspective of what it's like for these nine-year-olds, and I echo a lot of what Matt said. I think, you know, the TA, the aide, that's a great first step. I'd like to better understand, you know, how that aide's time will be spent, you know, one aide amongst three classes, what's the intent there? And, you know, we really just would like to also understand, you know, how kids are going to get that special bond with their teacher. You know, my kids have loved all their teachers, and we're so lucky here in the North Hills to have such awesome teachers. And I feel like these kids are being bounced around in these large classes, they don't have that opportunity to come and trust and have that relationship with their teacher. So, what we're looking for from the board is a lot of what Matt said, you know, what can be done to help the situation today, if anything? Can we hire more aides? Can there be more assistants? Can they be spread out somehow? But also, looking at reevaluating the policy of enrollment, or, I'm sorry, of class size. And I know from some research that North Hills actually already has a pretty small threshold for class size, but I don't think that's good enough, and I don't think we should just pat ourselves on the back for that. I think we should really take, you know, our pride and excellence in education and give these kids the best we can. Because when I look at the class size policy, it's actually kind of unusual to me to see that the secondary class levels are actually smaller, saying that a reasonable effort will be made to ensure that class size in social studies, science, and math will not exceed an average of 25 students. So, I don't understand why that, at the secondary level, and also for English, is 22. So, why is that higher for 4th through 6th than it is for the secondary students, where the students are probably more mature and able to handle being, you know, shuttled back and forth between classes and having maybe a larger class size at that age? So, you know, on behalf of the many 4th grade parents here, I'd just like to ask the board to reconsider that policy and perhaps even involve some parents in that conversation, because I would love to be involved.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last, we have Matt Ferry. Matt?
Hi, I'm Matt Ferry, 309 Highland High Drive in Ross. And when you're discussing policy 220, I'd appreciate knowing where the legal authority comes from for regulating the off-campus distribution and posting. It's my understanding that, including this year, a school in Georgia maybe had to settle a lawsuit over basically that exact thing, so I just want to make sure that, I want to understand where that comes from. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Okay, thank you all for your comments, and we certainly appreciate your input. We now could move on to the student representatives' report. I failed initially. Hannah or Ellie, do you want to say anything about yourselves before you start? Do you have a report? Do you have the microphone?
Okay, so I'll start. I'm Hannah Schuley. I'm an 11th grader. I'm on the golf team. I'm a part of hands for service, service club, Honor Society, and FBI.
I did.
Okay, my name's Ellie Fleischer. I'm a junior. I'm involved in many sports and activities as in basketball and lacrosse. I'm also very involved in many clubs at our school. I'm an officer for German club, and I'm in the National Honor Society and FBI.
Thank you, ladies. Do you have a report this evening?
Yeah, okay, so I have the athletic report. So, the school had a good year with many fun, a good start with many activities and sports planned. We started off the school year with a fall pep rally at Martirelli Stadium on August 19th. At the high school, we have all new principals, which are adjusting well to the new school and all the new students. We also have a new athletic director, Patrick Weber, who is a former high school assistant principal. We also have a new assistant athletic director, Carly McBride, who's from Erie, PA. And a fun fact about Carly is that her sister is actually placing in the WNBA. So, the last boys varsity football game was against Hampton, and North Hills won with a score of 35 to 14. Their next home football game is on September 27th against Gateway and Martirelli Stadium. The last girls varsity volleyball game was September 12th, and North Hills won with a score of 3 to 0. Sidney Wright had a great game with 14 kills and seven aces, and they are currently playing the middle school annex against Pine Richland. Soccer press was on September 7th, and the boys team defeated Deer Lakes in a last-second goal scored by Nate Saul. Their next home game is September 21st at Martirelli Stadium at 1:00 P.M. The boys golf team fell to Hampton on September 10th with a score of 237 to 210, led by Tyler Manfred with a score of 41. Their next home match is September 25th at Shannon Pen Country Club. And the 59th Annual Band Festival was on September 14th and was hosted by North Hills at Martirelli Stadium and featured other local school bands. And the band plays at halftime at every North Hills home game, football game, so be sure to be there to see the band play as well as the football team.
Thank you. Thank you, Allison.
Okay, so as I said, I'm Ellie Fleischer, and I'm going to be handling kind of like the school activities this year. So, first off, I'd like to thank our new administration, because it's led us to a great start to the new school year. Our numerous sports teams and clubs have begun, and the fall play has been announced. It is going to be CLU, which is going to occur November 8th, 9th, and 10th. More details will come. The school's annual spirit week will flow right into Homecomings Game, which will be at Martirelli Stadium on the 27th at 7:30. Then, on the 28th, the Homecoming Dance will start at 7:00 P.M. and will take place in the middle school annex. Academically, the school will offer the PSATs on October 16th for all students in 10th and 11th grade. On October 2nd, North Hills will offer a financial aid night for all seniors, led by the guidance department, at 7:00 P.M. in the high school auditorium. Also, please don't forget to check out the Planetarium show, and you can see the calendar for the various times of days. Thank you guys all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Welcome again. If you ever have any comments while we're, please, raise your hand if you're part of this. So, thank you. Thank you for serving. Okay, we can now, I'm going to move to the approval, the minutes that the board approved. The minutes from August 8th, 2019, work session legislative meeting, per the attached, I'll make that motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Now, I'll turn it over to Dr. Manarino for our superintendent's report.
We've had a really good start of the school year, as the girls just said, but I'm going to highlight some of the things that Hannah and Ellie mentioned, but I'm going to also mention a lot of the other fun stuff that's kind of occurred, and talk about what we're doing here in the month of September. So, these are our points of pride, tradition, and excellence for the month of September. I'm really proud of the fact that we had 49 students from the class of 2019 and from the class of 2020 who have been named AP Scholars for their outstanding performance on their Advanced Placement exams. You can see the categories that we have with our students. So, basically, what you have to be to be an AP Scholar is you must have scored three or better on three or more AP exams, and then it kind of goes up from there. I'm not real sure what the numbers are, but honors with distinction is like four or better on four or more AP exams. So, it's really impressive whenever you get high numbers of students that are achieving at high levels like this in the AP exam. It's a national exam, and so it's really nice to see that we had 49 students this year that are recognized for that. A national AP Scholar is something like three or higher on 10 or more AP exams, so those are really impressive numbers for our students. So, I'm proud to announce that our students are also growing, harvesting, and making their own healthy foods in Amy Pat Saliva's sustainable food course, and they have made bruschetta, white pizza, and zucchini noodle pasta with ingredients grown from the school's garden. Our National Merit Semifinals this year is senior Jesse Cronauer. They are named the semifinalists for the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. His outstanding performance puts him in a pool of semifinalists who represent less than 1% of high school seniors in the United States, which is an incredible accomplishment for Jesse. Our North Hills High School senior, Theona Richter's poem, "The Spider in a Burning Neighborhood", was published in the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh's 2019 Ralph Mont Creative Writing Anthology, which is a pretty impressive thing for one of our high school students there. This year, we opened up a middle school autistic support classroom, and that new center room for the Autistic Support Center was highlighted in a recent article in the Community Health Magazine. On September 17th, our schools hosted a Constitution Day, where elementary students held lessons centered on how our Constitution helped shape our country. They read and discussed aged-appropriate literature and created Constitution-centered artwork. While our secondary schools, they created and explored interactive nearpod related to the Constitution and to the Bill of Rights, and they discussed historical documents like the Magna Carta and how they influenced our Constitution, examined our government's involvement. They debated reasons for the independence movement, entitled for the principles of our Constitution, and finally, they discussed the Constitution's role in court cases and in social stratification. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Dible. North Hills High School German teacher, Joe Dible, will be recognized on the field at Saturday's Pitt Football Game for his work in the classroom and his dedication to helping provide opportunities for students. So, congratulations to Mr. Dible. And if you'd like tickets, you can get tickets for the game, and I'll see Joe on that link. So, I'm really proud to announce that this year, our Wind Ensemble was invited to attend a national festival. So, the North Hills High School Wind Ensemble will perform at the 2020 Music for All National Festival next March in Indianapolis, Indiana. Forty-eight students in grades 9 through 12 will participate. We are one of 16 bands in the country that were selected. We are the only band from Pennsylvania, and we are the smallest school district to be invited to this national event. Also, with our marching band, it was a picture-perfect evening for our 59th Annual Marching Band Festival. We had a total of 10 marching bands participate, including our own Band of Pride, Tradition, and Excellence. We had approximately 1,600 people attend that event that evening. As the girls said, our fall play is CLU onstage. I'm really looking forward to that. I think that'll be a really neat play for our kids. It will be held Friday and Saturday, November 8th and 9th at 7:30. We will also have a Sunday matinee on November 10th at 1:30. We will be hosting a second annual alumni choir concert that will take place on October 12th at 4:00 P.M. in the middle school auditorium. So far, we nearly have two dozen alumni who are already signed up to participate, so if you are an alumni from our choral program, please come out on October 12th and enjoy that event. So, we heard about the football team starting 4-0. They have beaten Butler, Fox Chapel, Kisske, and Hampton, and what's up next is Peters Township, and it's a pretty big game. I think it's the Channel 22 game of the week, and it may also be the Pittsburgh Steelers game of the week. I think it's the Channel 22 game of the week and it may also be the Pittsburgh Steelers game of the week. So, uh, that's a pretty big game for us this Friday night, uh, as we are at Peters Township. Um, so over the last five years, we've had an academic cup. And so what the academic cup is, is we take the cumulative GPA of the student athletes in each, uh, sports team. And then one of the top GPA wins this academic cup. And so it's congratulations this year to the 2019 girls varsity volleyball team who combined had a 3.85 GPA, which is really impressive. Uh, we had our Hall of Fame Night where the North Hills Hall of Fame inductees were recognized during last week's football game versus Hampton and a dinner was held in their honor on September 12th at Rico's Restaurant. Also that night at Hampton, the crowd had a red-out game. And that night, the game was Channel 11 Skylights Game of the Week and, of course, our marching band was Channel 11's Skylights Band of the Week. They actually had a competition like anybody had a chance. So North Hills Boys Soccer Alumni returned for a special recognition marking 50 years of North Hills Soccer during Soccer Fest at Martorelli Stadium that was held on September 7th. This is a pretty neat one. So Juju Smith Schuster visits Ross Elementary. Uh, our Ross Elementary School teacher, Jess Porter, shared some pictures of her class wearing Juju Smith jerseys on Instagram earlier this month. And Juju reached out to arrange a visit. He played catch with our students, he ran sprints, he participated in recess and activities. He brought balls and signed autographs for our kids. We've got some pretty nice pictures of Juju in our cafeteria, in Miss Porter's classroom, and with our students there outside after recess, which was a pretty neat thing. Student leaders recruited new members of clubs and activities at the Activities Fair this year. North Hills offers 30 clubs and activities to match the diverse interests of our student body. Every year, millions of people suffer in silence as a result of mental illness. And so I would like to thank the North Hills Student Section who took a moment during Friday night's football game to create awareness, give support, and remove the stigma around mental health to create inclusion and spread kindness to all. I'd like to congratulate our 2019-2020 class officers who were photographed here as that election had taken place. And this year, um, we're hosting a Safety September. In Safety September, the district does safety drills throughout the month as part of our new standard response protocol that we adopted last year. In the standard response protocol, we have a set of research-based actions and drills that are designed to prepare students, staff, and parents for emergency situations. And we have five potential actions that we, that we talk about, which is lock down, lock out, evacuate, shelter, and hold. I'd like to announce that Start With Hello Week is September 23rd through the 27th. So one of the two, this is one of two Sandy Hook Promise programs that were implemented in 2018-19. And we have activities promoting kindness, inclusion planned in all of our buildings for next week. At this time, I'd like to introduce some students that we have with us. So we have a number of students with us tonight who are going to share our Safety September activities and the things that are occurring in their schools as part of our Pride, Tradition, Excellence. So, kids, come on up.
Monday is the Start With Hello Week festivities at High Cliff. We will be starting our day at High Cliff with highs and high fives. Our principal and counselor reached out to some members of the Ross Township Police Department and our other North Hills administration staff to come to High Cliff and greet us, the students with highs and high fives as we enter the building in the morning. I think it will be a great way to start our day with our school leaders and police officers cheering us on as we head to school. We will also be welcomed by Start With Hello Chalk Drawings on the sidewalk as we enter the Timberland doors created by our staff. I can't wait to see their artistic skills. Once we get into our classrooms, we will be greeted with a high, high five, or another special greeting from our classroom teacher and start our morning announcements. The announcements will tell us all about Start With Hello and why reaching out and helping others is important in our school and community. Next, we will start our day with a Get To Know You Activity Game or Icebreaker in the classroom. Our teachers will have special activities planned for us during the morning work for another time throughout the day. I'm really excited about Start With Hello Week, Hello Week, since it gives us another opportunity to connect with our peers.
Hello, my name is Emily Steiner, a sixth grade student at Westview Elementary. We are excited to participate in the annual Start With Hello Week. Tuesday of next week, we start with Hello Day. Students will be encouraged to reach out, say hello, and do a random act of kindness for another student, a staff member, or a friend.
The color green represents our life, growth, and safety as symbolic of the Start With Hello Program. Wearing green provides an opportunity for students and staff to show support for our schools that promote open dialogue around areas of responsibility, health, and school safety. Wednesday, September 25th is Start With Hello Wear Green Day for our school community. At McIntyre Elementary and throughout the district, students and staff will wear green to demonstrate how we build strong relationships and connections with others through an inclusive and welcoming mindset. If we see someone alone, we will reach out and help by simply saying hello.
Good evening, my name is Sophia Regan and I'm a sixth grader at Ross Elementary. On Thursday during Start With Hello Week, we want to encourage each other by being thankful and reaching out to someone who has helped us in a time of need, whether that be a teacher, friend, family member, mentor, or coach. We are excited to celebrate next week as students will create co-syndromes to add to our whole support on the different ways to say hello and how we can include each other. We will also be doing different activities that promote kindness by reaching out to those who we are thankful for. Sometimes we must find the time to stop and thank the people who make a difference in our lives.
Hello, my name is Gianna Cutneys.
And I'm with Christiore.
We are eighth graders at North Hills Middle School. And last year, we were part of the first year of North Hills participating in the Sandy Hook Promise.
This year, this year we will continue to participate in the Sandy Hook Promise as we celebrate Start With Hello Week next week in school.
The school announcers will share messages about inclusion and acceptance each day in the morning and afternoon.
And each day, students will show their commitment to the Start With Hello Program through themed dress days.
Students will wear green, dress in 80's style.
Girls alike, wear their favorite sports team and show their North Hills skirt with red and white on Friday.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
And to share one of the many great things we do at North Hills Middle School.
Hello, I'm Emma Pollin and I will be talking to you today about upcoming events at the high school. So we also have Start With Hello Week. Um, our specific day is Wednesday, September 25th, and the goal is to encourage kindness schoolwide. Um, and the hope is that the theme from Start With Hello Day will carry over days and even months following. Um, a video will introduce the idea behind Start With Hello Day during announcements on Tuesday and Wednesday of that week. And Hello Tickets will be distributed to all homerooms. Each student will get five tickets and the purpose is to meet new people or even share a conversation with someone you've never really gotten to know. And the motivation, besides learning more about classmates, is a raffle prize for all who exchange all five tickets. English classes that day will have special lessons surrounding the topics of kindness, inclusion, and mental health. 12th graders, 12th graders will get the chance to create digital or physical posters of any lesson learned or positive message relating to becoming a successful leader in the community. There is a new club this year, the Stand Together Club. Um, they're already doing stuff at the high school and they're pretty great. It is a student-run organization and their goal is to spread positivity and inclusion throughout the entire school. They will be leading a discussion about these kindness themes in ninth and 10th grade English classes next Wednesday. In addition, students and staff will be given multiple other ways in which they can bring a message of kindness into their school. So on top of that, we also have Safety Week next, uh, starting next Monday. Each day immediately following the morning announcements, an administrator will come over the intercom and deliver a prompt for a specific drill. Homeroom teachers will review with students the role of their class for each specific situation and teachers and students can refer to the SRP posters located in all rooms in an easily visible spot to aid in reviewing drills. Next Thursday, September 26th, 20 students from the high school, five from each grade, will meet with the Pennsylvania Attorney General here in the LGI Room. This meeting acts as a student summit about the safety system Safe To Say. Safe To Say is a youth violence prevention program that the Pennsylvania Office of the Attorney General launched and now runs. Since the program launched, uh, pretty recently, the summit will function as a way for students to share their thoughts and opinions about the program. And this may include better ways to implement this program or improvements. As you can see, the high school is busy these next few weeks progressing the safety and positivity of students and wellness of the school as a whole. Thank you for your time and attention.
Those were our points of pride, tradition, excellence. So if you can go that way, that would be great.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Manarino. We can now move on to education of a minute.
Thank you. Um, we're going to do the order of education a little bit differently today. Dr. Manarino and Mrs. Matthew are going to give a, um, presentation on the academic calendar. And the board will have a discussion and then I will make a motion to adopt one version or another and then we'll carry on with the rest of the education items. So I will hand it back to Dr. Manarino.
Dr. Williams, you still driving?
I'm attempting, sir.
All right.
I am attempting.
I think we've heard bits and pieces about what we're, what we were attempting to do here with the calendar. And, and everybody was kind of right on that we were looking for a way to do the kindergarten assessment in a way that we could have all of our teachers available to do parent conferences. And that was really the piece that was missing in this previous run of our kindergarten assessment. This was the first year that we did it and it did not come out the way that we really wanted it to and we felt that we could do a much better job. We came up with an outside-of-the-box idea and, um, I think we can all recognize that that is not what's in the best interest of parents. And I talked to the board a little bit about this also. Um, yeah, this was in the best interest of the district when we looked at it. And there's a lot of really positive things that Amy's going to talk to you about with the kindergarten assessments because they are very important to us. What they are, what we do, why it's important, all of those things I'm going to talk, turn over to Mrs. Matthew to talk about those things. But, um, I do want you to know that we, and that's, that's kind of everybody in this room. We are listening, um, we do listen. This was not a hasty jump at something. It was, it wasn't a reach at something that, um, I think we know is not possible for our families. And so, um, we're going to continue to look for ways to do this the right way without, and you were pretty close, it's about $18,000. So we're going to look for a way to do this, um, without having to just write the check because that's the easy way out is just pay the bill and move on. And that's not how we operate either. Um, so, uh, I do still want Amy to come up and talk about the calendar options and what the differences are between the two. Option one is definitely the one that we were going to have kindergarten graduation. We were going to have a ceremony and a picnic and do nice fun things for them. But yeah, it does leave you eight days short than the end of the year. And, um, we did know that we have, we were going to have childcare issues and we started to look at ways that we could create some sort of, um, club and activity things because, um, like you said, uh, the camps haven't begun and it really does put everybody behind the eight ball to scramble with these things. And, and that's not what's in the best interest of our community. And so, uh, we're going to look for a way to make this work. And I think even Mr. Wilga said that. And in the end, the, the recommendation is going to be for calendar number two, where everybody begins and ends on the same day. And we'll work the rest of the pieces out along the way. And if it means that we can't, we're going to just pay the bill to figure out how we can best do this for our kindergarten students as well. So I don't want anybody short-changed in this game. I don't want this incoming kindergarten students, the current kindergarten students, their parents, their siblings, nobody. So we're going to try to find a way that we can make this work. But I still think it is important for us to talk about what those two calendars look like, what the, um, kindergarten readiness assessment really is and why it is important. Uh, and then we can let the board move on with the business of what we do. Sound fair? Okay, Amy?
Thank you, Dr. Manarino. So this does give us a good opportunity to share with the public what the kindergarten assessments are all about and how that all came to be. So if we look back at, uh, 2018, actually, um, the kindergarten assessments were part of a board policy that was passed related to students coming to school. And it was a part that our teachers felt very strongly was important to, uh, helping us do what we need to do for kindergarten students earlier than we would have been able to before. Because kindergarten is one grade level where we have no experience with the children before they come to school. So the kindergarten readiness assessments give us a little snapshot into what kindergartners need, what that particular group of kindergartners need, even specific kindergartners need as they begin school. So as a committee, the Brigance Early Childhood Screen 3 for Kindergarten was selected to be our kindergarten readiness tool. And, uh, the teachers participated in training. They spent an entire day here, actually, in this room on a Saturday, being trained in how to administer the kindergarten readiness assessment tool. And it identifies physical development, language development, and academic cognitive development. In addition, there's a self-help and social emotional scale that parents complete while their child is participating in the assessment. So things that are physical development, fine motor, gross motor. Examples of that would be asking children to balance, close one eye, balance on one foot, challenge for me maybe. Uh, take a few steps backwards with your eyes closed, drawing shapes, and printing first and last name. For language development, things such as naming body parts, thumb, chin, shoulder, uh, speaking in sentences, how many, how many words are strung together in a sentence? What does that communication look like? And then the academic cognitive development was, what is your first name and last name? Do you know your birth date? Can you recite the alphabet a little different from singing the song of the alphabet? We want students to know that those are individual letters. When students and children sing the song, sometimes it seems like it's words in a song as opposed to individual letters. And those individual letters and those individual sounds are the building blocks of reading. We want them to be able to participate in road counting. We want them to be able to match numerals to a set of objects. And we want them to be able to put together small groups of objects. So those are some of the things that are on the kindergarten readiness assessment and give us a good bit of information. The reason May is selected as the time for the kindergarten readiness assessments is because it gives children a chance to finish their preschool program if they're participating in one. So they have the full advantage of the completion of the curriculum there. It allows, uh, May allows still some summer months so families can use the tools that they are given through the kindergarten screening to better prepare children for the start to school. And families have information they might need. The kindergarten readiness assessment tool really helps families who are on the edge of deciding is my child ready for kindergarten or is maybe a little more time advantageous? So it would give some information for families who are in that spot of making a decision. So in 2019, we were sharing results in two ways. We needed to share them with schools and we needed to share them with families. So the school side, we got a lot of information. We got a lot of details about what children knew, about what they were able to do. And we got a lot of information from families who completed the surveys. My child does know how to do certain things independently and maybe not others. For families, we provided information, but if any of you were a kindergarten family coming into the 2019-2020 school year, you're aware that that didn't give you as much information as you or we had hoped. Uh, the reports were bare bones minimum and really didn't provide the kind of information that we wanted to provide to our families. we wanted to provide to our families. And in looking back at the Brigance training that our teachers attended, what really is intended by that program is that there's an opportunity for families and teachers who administer the test to meet together. And that's the piece that we were missing. So that's where our creativity came into play, and we were looking for solutions, because last year we scheduled half an hour for each screening. Now if we're including time for teachers who are our district teachers who know our curriculum to talk with families after they've just administered the assessment, that's the piece we need. And that's where we needed to add more time. So that's kind of behind a lot of this. What we want for families is we want to give pieces of information for practice at home. Or maybe we have a child who we can say, good job, you know what you need to do, but keep practicing it, because in a few months, you're going to need to do it independently. Sometimes children can do all of these things in isolation, but when a stranger or someone new to them asks them to do something, it's hard for them. And they might say, no, I don't want to do that. Or they might choose to do something they want to do instead of what the adult wants them to do. So those are vital pieces for parents to have as well. So we want parents to be able to make informed decisions. So in our planning for this upcoming screening, we know that we must include those individual conferences. And our teachers have been working on what that should look like, how we can get that done quickly and not waste parents' time and not waste district time, because that is a piece of this, but how we can get information out that is needed, what resources families might need. And also, we know that it's really important, if we share information in advance of the assessments being administered, chances are good that families will start working on those strategies. If you know that your child needs to write first name and last name, chances are good you're going to start working on that in advance. So that's good for everyone. So those are some of our goals, and that was why the schedule was proposed the way that it was, so that we could accomplish those things with time and comfort, so that our classrooms could be open, so that the screenings could take place in the classrooms rather than using substitute teachers to cover the classrooms and administer the assessments in maybe a corner in the library or down the hallway. But what I want to assure you is, like Dr. Manarino said, whatever the decision, I think we know what the decision will be, we will do our very, very best to make sure that those important pieces that we know from that first implementation that we're missing get included in our second round. So no matter what the format is, we'll get creative again, and we will think of the best way that we can do that, so that our families have the information they need and so that the school does as well.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Matthew. I'd like to make a motion for the board to adopt the 2020-2021 Academic Calendar Option Number Two.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Can I ask Mrs. Matthew a couple questions about the presentation?
Please.
Thanks for that. I think that's really very helpful, and I have a kindergartner, sorry, kindergartner. I would agree that the reports that we got, I mean, there was some concern generally that the reports that were presented were just not very comprehensive with respect to like what information was, you know, provided. So I do appreciate the, you know, effort to get those parents that additional information. I'm curious if the reports that were, or what the kindergarten teachers have, like what their feedback is with how the assessments were compared to what they're actually seeing in the classroom. I mean, are they, were they somewhat, I mean, they were more useful than nothing, I assume, but were they useful enough that the teachers feel they were beneficial? I mean, do we need to, you know, kind of revisit that process?
I think at this point, it's done two really good things for us. It's allowed us to balance the composition of a classroom. So in the past, we had those unknowns with incoming kindergarteners. So sometimes we would end up with a classroom where a number of the children were struggling with the same issue, and it was hard for the other children in the room who weren't struggling with that same issue, because there was maybe an overwhelming group of them who were. So this allowed us to balance the composition better, so I think that's a real benefit that we're already seeing from the assessments. And I think the teachers, if I could summarize maybe, feel like they knew their students better coming in that first day than they have ever before. It's just a snapshot, so it's not a perfect, it's not a full exam, it's not something that you would receive maybe from a medical doctor or from a psychological exam, it's certainly nothing to that extent. But it did give us a snapshot to be able to know a little bit more about our students and know in advance, instead of waiting for maybe a week or two or even longer to pass before we got to know those children.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. I appreciate that initial insight. I mean, and I think it's great that we're working on these issues, so thanks for that background.
You're welcome.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm abstaining.
Good thing. Mrs. Green is abstaining, Lori.
Thank you.
The reason I'm abstaining is I think tonight with this is just a debate, that they're going to look into this in a more in the future. And I voted on it, and it was something that was going to be finalized, and I knew all those perspectives, but we don't have that tonight, so therefore I abstain.
Thank you. Next, we have another presentation from Dr. Manarino, who is going to give us an enrollment update followed by an update on the sixth grade transition to the middle school. And I'm assuming that we can also address some of the High Cliff family questions at that time as well.
Every year at this time, we give an enrollment update. So that's where this is with the first part of this. Now, unfortunately, the situation that we have occurring at High Cliff is that we saw this issue coming, and it's the reason why we decided in February of last year that we are going to need to move sixth grade to the middle school. And so that's why the two presentations are kind of sandwiched here together tonight. We are out of classroom spaces at High Cliff at this point. I don't think the temporary spaces are a possibility at all. We don't have the spaces one, and by the time we get through the permitting, it is a full structure. It wouldn't even be there by the time we get to the end of the school year. So that's something that is a longer-term fix, but at the same time, I'm not even sure where it would go on that land, on this property. So we have looked at a lot of those different ideas, and I even said in February, unfortunately, that we could be in a situation based upon the way our enrollment fluctuates and grows, that we could be out of space this year. But I didn't think we wanted to rush that sixth grade of the middle school project to begin for the 1920 school years. So to alleviate this moving forward, that's pretty much the answer. So it was an imperfect storm or perfect storm for our fourth grade class at High Cliff because of the class size policy. You have 81 students, and it divides by 25 into a factor of four. It divides by 27 into a factor of three. And that's not the only way we do things. I had to look at everything that we were operating under. We had 28 classrooms. At the time, we had 27 sections, and then we have a big kindergarten coming in. And that's where it started to get to the juggling point. And at one point, we locked several students to transfers over the summer, and so that number felt like it was a little more comfortable. And then the second week of August comes, and you get three students that move in, and we're back to a closed building for fourth grade. And then any student that would attend or arrive at High Cliff from that point forward would be placed at Westview because there are seats available for us in Westview. It's difficult. We struggle every day to find pairs and teaching assistants. We're fortunate that the teaching assistant that we are hiring under the personnel part of tonight's meeting is familiar to High Cliff and High Cliff Fourth Grade. She's been with us in the past, so we're actually excited that we can bring her back to work with that group of kids. We also have a number of our other professionals in the building helping out. Our math specialist helps and does things with us to kind of alleviate the pressure that's in that room. So too are our reading specialist and speech therapist. So we do have other folks pitching in to help to mitigate that, but it is unfortunate, an imperfect storm, because even if in that August time period, I said, okay, let's add this class, drop that class size, put them back to where they were, I don't know where I put it. And so that's kind of the situation that we're in unfortunately, which is, again, with a growing district, the reason why we chose to take advantage of the vacant space that's here and move sixth grade up here for the next school year. And I know that doesn't help anybody, but that's the kind of rationale and thinking behind everything. It was not just, ah, 27, 81 divided by 3 is 27, this is easy, we're inside the policy. No, the policy's a guideline. It's not a hard, fast rule. We have a number of, we've had in the past a number of classes that, in the same situation, if we had space, we would have divided it out and added a teacher. And it's just that unfortunate imperfect storm that we're sitting in right now. And so hopefully alleviating that pressure by moving sixth grade hopefully never puts us in that situation again. And I know that doesn't do anything for the parents that are here tonight or your children, but we're doing everything we can to get them the help and the support. I stay behind our teachers, and I know you know them now that you've spent some time with them. There's three fantastic fourth grade teachers there. I'm really pleased that the teaching assistant that we're going to put in there is not new to the game. She's been there and with that group before, which is the best-case scenario we could have asked for when we were looking for a teaching assistant. So that's really where we are. So that is, that really, that piece in a nutshell. But let's talk about the enrollment as a whole. Here's where we are as far as our enrollment and our sections are concerned. We're running 112 elementary sections, and I think somebody had said, we do have a really good class size when you look at it this way. Again, just doing simple math, we got 2,535 elementary kids, K-6, we run 112 sections. So we're about 22 and a half students per classroom. That's a great number, but yes, it is graduated. Those numbers are smaller at the lower levels, and they get larger at the upper levels. And we have a situation that fourth grade at High Cliff is our largest class that we have going on in the district. Next slide, please. So this is what it looks like when you look at our last day of school to the first day of school, grade by grade. So our kindergarten is smaller, our first grade is larger. You can go right down through the list, and you can see that we're in, that bubble is now coming through the high school. It's about to graduate with that negative 41 there in the senior classes, that 297 that was kind of coming in behind there, they're now 307 as seniors moving out. And you can see from there, our numbers increase along the way. And again, that's, I think you've all known and heard the enrollment stories from us in the past, that we're growing at the elementary level, and that bubble's going to eventually hit this building. This building is our largest building. It was something I didn't know until I started this project a couple of years ago. It has more classrooms than the high school. When you get to the secondary level, because scheduling is completely different, it fits much better here. Whenever you divide the puzzle into nine blocks for a school day, eight academic periods and a lunch, it fits much better than it does in our smaller elementary schools. So that's how this whole piece works out. So we are a little larger this year than we were in the past. This slide is now talking about the same grades. So the last day of school, obviously, those kindergartners are now first grade, that's why it's offset one. But this is our enrollments and withdrawals. And the interesting part about this is if we rewind the clock maybe 15 years, you would see really big numbers in seventh grade and ninth grade as students were coming out of the private and parochial schools into this school district. And that's not happening anymore, which tells me that they're already here. And so when you see that, you know, 14 in seventh grade, that's not a number that we wouldn't have expected, because we have a lot of our families that have their students go to K-6 private and parochial school, and then they come here for their middle school experience. The thing that's really shocking is I remember times when I was the high school principal that that ninth grade number was sometimes in the 30s and 40s. It's four. So they're here, which is a really good thing. So we had a student change of 30 this school year as far as who these students were on the last day of school and then the number of students we had coming in on the first day of school. So this is what our enrollment looked like over the summer. Last year, that was 128. So we had less students moving in this summer than we have in the past. Some of the real quick notes that I put in here is that this year, we hadn't actually, we actually had a decline in elementary enrollment K-6. So there's 19 less K-6 students this year than there was in the past. It's the first time in seven years that that number went in a negative direction. And the reason why I thought that that was important is that when we looked at Shelby Spewin's projections, this is what he projected for this year. He projected a decline for this year. And the reason why that's important is because he's also projected a 3% increase over the next six school years. And I thought that that was an important figure to put in here, because if his projections remain true, which they have to this point, now, they haven't been exactly on the number, but he told us that we were going to go up dramatically, and we did. And he said, in this school year, we were going to drop, and we did. So if we're going to go up again, which his projections are stating, we're going to be looking at a K-5 population of 2,251. And again, the important part about this is that's about 284 students less than our current K-6 population. So moving sixth grade to this building helps to alleviate that classroom and that capacity issue that we could be facing. So again, it's showing that more and more that that becomes the correct decision as far as our enrollment capacities are concerned. I already mentioned that we have no vacant classrooms at High Cliff. We also have no vacant classrooms at Ross. Ross third grade is in the same situation as High Cliff fourth grade, they are closed. So any third grade student that would arrive at Ross from this point forward would attend McIntyre. There is space at third grade at McIntyre for us there. Both of them have a TA on tonight's agenda to be hired. So in 2020-2021, I think you all know, we're going to be moving the sixth grade class to the middle school here. In August, we sent our application to the Department of Education, which this is important for the board to know. You have to reconfigure your buildings when you change grade levels like this. We have done that. So we've applied for this building to become a 678 building. We've also applied for all four of our elementary schools to become K-5 buildings. So the important part there is we're not going to do anything differently with the configurations of buildings. Four K-5s, a 678, and 9 through 12. Okay? Because there were, a few years ago, we talked about maybe doing some different drastic models, and that is not what we're doing at this point. So this is the application that's with the Department of Education right now. Okay? So sixth grade transition, we've started some transition activities and just some meetings with groups. So we have a transition committee that has district administrators, there's one fifth grade teacher from each of the four buildings, there's one sixth grade teacher from each of the four buildings. I think she's on that committee from the middle school. Sorry, I forgot to add you to the slide, but she's present tonight. Two parent representatives from each elementary school, so we can talk about how we transition appropriately out of the elementary schools and make a really good experience for our current fifth and sixth graders. And also then what does that experience look like as they transition to the middle school, and what that sixth grade experience looks like once they're here as middle school students? We met on September 5th, we'll meet again on the 10th, 21st of November, the 9th of January. So after each one of these, I will give a similar report so that you kind of know and understand what we've been talking about at those meetings. So right now, what we're doing is we're finalizing the locations of the sixth grade classrooms, where our classrooms are going, the special ed rooms gifted. Innovations in Design, if you were here with me when we talked about this, we were going to have a STEM class. That class is going to be named Innovations in Design. So where is that going to be located? Our art, our music band, orchestra, vocal music, computer science. So where are all of those locations finalized? Because we're going to spruce up the classrooms. We're going to paint them, fix the lights, not that there's anything wrong with them, but we're going to go with LED lights. Replace the ceiling tiles, carpet the floors. So we're looking to spruce up those spaces where it hasn't been freshened up in, it'll be 10 years, eight years or so. So we're going to recreate those spaces. Those spaces have chalkboards, they're going to be, we're going to have whiteboards to put in place. And then the Promethean boards that we purchased for the elementary schools this year will be installed in those rooms before those teachers get here. So that's going to be in place, which is important to him, finalizing where all of those locations are, because they're going to have that same look as they did when they were at an elementary school. That's what that says. Okay. Currently, we have 16 classroom teachers that's posted, one in Innovations in Design posted. So we offered out to our current sixth grade teachers, basically, are you intending to transfer to the middle school from the elementary school? Which subjects do you feel most comfortable teaching, whether it's the 80-minute block, which is math or English, the 40-minute block, which is science or social studies? And so we're looking to pair the teachers up. Are we going to build teams and those types? That's a little bit later. So in February, when we're talking about filling the positions, in February, we will then do special area positions, the special ed job, the gate job. We need a sixth grade counselor, assistant principal, reading specialist to kind of round out the staffing model of sixth grade coming over to the building. And then in June, we will post assistant principal secretary. So that was the entire staffing model that we had talked about before. We're taking it in chunks and pieces, doing the classrooms first. The reason why the Innovations in Design one is up there is because we'd like to know who that teacher is sooner rather than later, so we can work closely with that person to build the curriculum, so that they're an integral part of what that curriculum is and what it's going to be. So we felt it very important to post it with the first group, so that we can get that person hired, and then they can work with us to build that curriculum. This is what is kind of going to happen with curriculum. So that Innovations in Design that I just mentioned is a trimester course. It's going to be, it's going to be 60 periods in a school year. So we're going to need to increase academic time from a six-day cycle, which is 30 periods, to a trimester, which is 60 periods for the subjects of art and computer science. So again, when we talked about the six-day cycle compared to what this is going to look like in a trimester model, this was the academic benefit to the sixth graders coming to this building, because there's more time on the middle school schedule than there is in the elementary schedule. And so here, you can see where we're beginning to capture that time. We need to increase academic time for general music band and orchestra as that goes from a 30-day cycle. That is going to be a Monday, Wednesday, Friday band, orchestra, music period, and a Tuesday, Thursday, physical education and health period. So those also need to be increased. Band is going to go to 108 periods from 30, so there's a major significant impact on the amount of music education our students will get. And health and physical education goes from 60 days, because it means twice in a six-day cycle, to 72 periods. And so those are the increased academic time. And then we're just going to quickly review math, ELA, science, and social studies, because the time structure doesn't change with them. But as we're moving, I think it's a really good time for us to take a look at all of our curricular areas to make sure that we meet all those needs. And so we're going to take a look. And so we're going to take a look at that as well. And then our library of resources from elementary to middle school. The library at K-12 is on needs assessment and they will make this transition a focus of their needs assessment. So we will be taking materials and resources from each of the four libraries to make sort of a sixth grade collection here at the middle school. The one thing that we had talked about is with 16 classes operating, could we team them and if we did, what would that look like? So could we do eight teams of two teachers, which is teacher pairs, which is, that's basically the departmentalization model again? Or could we do something like four teams of four teachers and have the students have an opportunity to have time with four teachers as opposed to two? Those are on the table to be discussed. We'll just keep continuing to have those discussions when we have those transition meetings moving forward. And again, I'll keep you posted as we get at our meetings here afterwards. Here's some of the things that we've already done. We're having transition activities at each of the buildings. So High Cliff Elementary has a fifth grade visit on May 11th and a sixth grade visit on May 4th, and that's visits to the middle school. So they'll come here as a group. McIntyre is already scheduled on May 12th and 5th. Ross is 15 and 8 and Westview is 14 and 7. So that's their transition from the elementary here as a, as a middle school visit. We're going to have end of the year celebrations that were separate. It was something that we felt was very important, that it was not one ceremony for two grades that they each had their own grade, their own ceremony per grade. So you can see here's the ceremonies and these can all be found on our calendar, but the dates are listed there. May 26th looks like a popular day and May 27th. So you can see that's when all of those celebrations for the fifth grade graduation and the sixth grade graduation have already been scheduled. Again, that's on our district calendar. And then they, we will have two separate track and field days. Again, something we felt was very important. So sixth grade track and field is May 6th. If it rains, that'll be held May 12th. Fifth grade track and field is on the 7th. If it rains, it'll be held on the 13th. All students will receive T-shirts from their parent organizations at each elementary building. And then both fifth and sixth grade students will attend the middle school musical preview on January 29th. It's something that we've always done in the past. We have a winter musical here at the middle school and it was always a nice event for our sixth grade students to come up and see that musical. There's enough room in our large auditorium here to have them both here at the same time. So we will have both fifth and sixth graders come to have that day performance of our junior high middle school on the 29th, I think it said. And then this is something that's kind of neat that we came about as we talked about, what can we do fun for our students who are arriving here to the middle school next year? So this is kind of a save the date slide. I know after today Heather's going to publish this idea out there as to what we're going to do. But for our next year's incoming sixth and seventh graders, we're going to have a scavenger hunt here at the building for them. We're going to have a back to school scavenger hunt, which we've talked about having, there's about 20 or 21, 25 locations in this building that we think is important for them to find, whether it's the library, the cafeteria, the nurse's office, their locker, their classroom, those types of things that they can go about the building supervised by the adults in the district. Some of our eighth grade students and student council is going to pitch in, make it a fun day for kids, have the building open from 12 o'clock to 7 o'clock so that students can come, work in teams of two to five and have a scavenger hunt. We talked about having food trucks available outside and make it sort of a fun event and a carnival as we welcome them here into this building. And yes, parents are welcome as a part of it. It's the reason we did noon to 7:00 so that we can be here well into the night and everybody can have access to this fun activity. So we're going to have a spirit sale, as it says, food trucks, and just make it something kind of neat for the kids as we welcome them here to the building. So that's where we're going to be there. And then I will have our next update on November 7th because our next board meeting is actually before our next transition committee meeting.
Thank you. It seems like we're in a really good place for the transition and I'm glad we have a year to plan this out and I think it's great that we have a committee made of various stakeholders. So I have two more items under education. The first is a request to approve an agreement with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit to provide Title I reading and math services to eligible students who live in the North Hills School District. They must live in High Cliff and Westview attendance areas and this would be for the 2019 to 2020 school year. And the Title I allotment is $5,778. These funds will be used for pupil instruction and the AIU will provide for, will provide opportunity for parental involvement and teacher professional development. And the next is a request for the board to approve the acceptance of the Ready to Learn Grant in the amount of $393,030. The purpose of this grant is to support research-based best practices in education and it offsets the costs associated with maintaining a high-quality full-day kindergarten program aligned with the state's current standards. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve education items four and five.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to finance. Dr. Hirsch.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go from academic sales, talking about money. And the first thing we have is a presentation from Mr. Chris Brewer, who is with Dintmore and Scholl LLP, which is a bond council. And just to give you a little bit of background, again, I don't give us all the technical details, but basically we have an opportunity to save some money by refinancing some of the bonds that were taken out when the elementary schools were reconstructed and refinanced. So it's very similar to a homeowner looking at considering, should I refinance mortgage? In this case, should we refinance bonds? And so I think anytime we've got an opportunity to save the district and the taxpayers' money, we need to give it some really strong consideration. So without, please, please give us information.
Thank you very much. I am Chris Brewer from Dintmore and Scholl and with me here tonight is Nick Faujian from PNC Capital Markets. I'm the lawyer. My part of this is boring, so I'm going to get off the stage as quickly as I can and turn it over to Nick to talk about the numbers, which is more what you want to hear. What is on your agenda tonight? A document prepared by our office, a resolution that would authorize an occurrence of indebtedness, but that new indebtedness would be for the purpose of refinancing the prior indebtedness. So not unlike a home mortgage refinancing, you would just be switching out the old debt at a higher interest rate for new debt and lower interest rate. As drafted, in order to comply with state law, in order to set the stage here so we can be as light on our feet in this market as possible, the resolution has a not to exceed amount, not to exceed interest rates. That's to both meet the legal requirements that you have a specificity to the bottom issue, but to give PNC adequate room during the course of the issue to move around principle and to negotiate interest rates and to sort of bring the best overall transaction to you. But with those outside parameters, there is in section 1101, a minimum savings so that we don't encourage you or wouldn't recommend you do this unless you can achieve a savings level that would benefit the district and make sense and use this opportunity well. Bonds are generally sold in the marketplace with a prepayment restriction, sometimes known as redemption privilege, but from your perspective, really a restriction on how quickly you can prepay. That's because investors want to lock up the investment for a period of time and they're going to offer you better rates when they know they can keep the investment for that time period. With that said, you want to use these opportunities wisely. The old bonds that are in place actually cannot be redeemed away from investors until next year. But we've, and we've been studying this with Mr. Hall's input, Mr. Smith's input, we're getting close enough to a timeframe where with interest rates as low as they've been recently, it makes some sense to see what can proceed. So that's about it. The bonds were issued in 2010 for new construction at the time, under then prevailing federal tax law opportunities, you could issue debt on a taxable basis. The stated rate on the bonds were a little higher than what is common for tax-end borrowers such as the district. But there was a federal subsidy that during the term of the time of the recession was intended to encourage investment in municipals and balance out for the school districts such as yourself or all municipal governments around this country, balance out the cost of money in that recessionary time. You have already previously refinanced the 2010 A-bonds, which were at that time tax ended, reached an opportunity for them a couple of years ago. But now we're getting close enough and the markets have been cooperating well enough that the 2010 Ps are eligible and we can save money. And again, that's the purpose of it is only if we can reduce the debt service obligation. But before you get to the resolution, I think that Mr. Faujian probably wants to give you sort of an update and give you some of the substance to where we are in the market and then we'll look for a vote.
I'm Chris, I'm Nick Faujian from PNC Capital Markets, the investment banker for the school district. Does anyone have a copy of the board of the, of the rate? Let's make sure. Just want to quickly get through this one page handed out. If you have questions, please stop me as we go and make sure we address them. So I'll kind of walk through it clockwise. The bond issue we're proposing to do will refund your Build America Bonds issued in 2010, as Chris said. And if we look at the source and use of funds, it gives us basically a synopsis of the bond issue, where the money's coming from and where it's intended to go to accomplish the refunding. In this example, we're selling about $15.5 million of bonds and they'll be structured in coupon to raise about another $2.6 million of proceeds. So we'll be working about $18 million of bond proceeds in this example if we did the bonds today. There's no capital card with the district, there's no other funds, so we're using exclusively bond proceeds to accomplish the refunding. Under the uses below that, the refunding deposit is almost $17.9 million. That's related to set aside money to call the bonds in 2010 to pay their interest and redeem those bonds in 2010. Once that deposit is made, those bonds will come off of your balance sheet and the new bonds will go on. The underwriters discount is the fee basically paid to PNC to place the bonds and this would be 0.265% of the par amount of the issue. I believe that's the lowest underwriters discount the districts had on their bond issues as well. We have a placeholder for issuance costs. There's basically legal fees, bond ratings and other costs to accomplish the bond issue away from the underwriting spread. We're using $120,000. That's, it's probably going to be less than that, but we're going to make sure we had a proper accounting for that. And there's no other use of the funds, there's no capital being raised, it's all refunding. And because the bonds are sold in 5,000s, we try to get as close to zero within 5,000 we can, we're about $300 over that right now. So that's the composition of the bond issue. That's where the money's coming and where it's going. A step to the right under the blue, and if I'm just kind of walking across the option of the payment dates, we have refunded debt service. That's the debt service after the BAB subsidy, the federal subsidy that Chris mentioned. The proposed debt service is designed to basically match that off and we're taking the savings in the last few years. And this was one scenario that we went through with administration to basically line you up for a future capital borrowing if necessary. Refunding savings is the difference between those. So the difference between the existing and the proposed debt service, about $1.3 million. So we're over the target right now that is laid out in your resolution. We annualize that so you can see how it runs, it's basically flat until we get to 2028 and 29. And then the very far right column translates that to what's the school district share of that after reimbursements, about $1.1 million. So after your costs and after the state takes their share, the district will save the $1.1 million over the life of this bond issue. In really simple terms, really what is driving this? And in the red below that the interest rates on the old bonds and the new bonds are compared, the net interest rate on the prior debt is about 3 and 3/4%. 3.76. If we sold the bonds this afternoon and come to you, the rate would be about 1.8%. Basically cutting more than half. It's really interest rate driven, is how the savings are being generated. So that's the map behind the opportunity. The important data is under the green, just to give you an idea of what the plan would be upon your approval tonight. I was also here tonight to discuss this, senior authorization. A bond sale would happen on October 2nd and we close on October 30th. Very last thing is we went through the rating process again with S and P. District's bond rating was reaffirmed at double A minus with a stable outlook. That's a very strong bond rating for our Western Pennsylvania school district and again, reflects upon the district, its administration and its finances. So we're happy to report that as well. So that's in a nutshell, what the opportunity for the district is for consideration tonight.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
If rates stayed where they are or fall, if we wait until our bonds mature, how much more do we save?
I don't have a statistic. I can give, I don't have with me. We went through that a bit, but I don't, I don't have it with me right now. Sorry.
I think when we were discussing this earlier, it was about 300 to 400,000. That's how it works.
Yeah, that brings it though. I didn't want to mistake.
If we wait until maturity, will we have to pay out the fees? The fees that we're paying now?
Oh, yes, we'd still have to issue other bonds.
Right.
But it would, it would save money because we're not going to pay any other. Question is, would it, would interest rate stay the same?
And isn't it also possible that the fees that you negotiated now could go up if we wait?
I'm sorry?
That the fees that you've negotiated now could go up, that same deal might not be available if we refinance later?
We have a pretty good idea where the fees should come in at. $120,000 is more than adequate. Once we know those exact fees, what we've always done is lay those out for, on a line item basis so you know what they are.
No, I understand that for now. What my question is, Mr. Bogus was saying, if we wait, there's potential that we could get more. But I'm saying, is it also possible that our fees could rate, could rise between now and later? Now I sense some of that or?
That could be possible.
Or you think they'd be basically the same?
I, I don't think they would wander widely, to be honest.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
I think the interest rates are really the more important question because that really was swinging the saving. The saving, the cost here, about $160,000. You could lose that with a fairly small change in interest rates. We've had such a plunge in interest rates because what's going on in the world right now, it comes and goes. When Brexit happened, interest rates plunged and then it went back up after seven or eight Fed hikes. We're back down now, it could go back up. It's, it's, things are so volatile right now, it's really hard to say which way things would go.
So do we take the bird in the hand, knowing that interest rates are low now or wait until later? Which I think is what Mr. Bogus suggests.
If I might, not to persuade you one way or another, but we have had a number of clients who issued the America bonds in 2010 and who were of the mind to wait until they got closer to redemption periods. And yet, when rates dropped so dramatically this summer, so many of those clients are now either just to accomplish a sale or getting ready to do a sale. So you're in good company if you decide you don't want to run that risk that rates could go back up on you. But that said, it takes some time, rating processes and things like that, paperwork, actions, so that, you know, if we can't hit a target, then we're going to wait and, you know, squite it out a little while. But I do think that your administrations are aligned, we're certainly generally recommending that chance the rates could stay where they are for another whole year is, is not the better.
Well, I personally agree with you. I mean, I personally think that it's a window of opportunity that we should take advantage of now, but I just want to make sure that everybody has a chance to understand what the decision is and because of what my perspective is.
Yeah, I think that is important. Mathematically, the transaction gets a little better for you as we get closer to that redemption date. But the mathematics on that an academic basis assume that rates stay flat.
And that's a big assumption. Did anybody else have any other questions?[1678.13] If there's no others, questions, then I'm going to make the motion that the board approve the resolution authorizing the occurring of non-electoral debt by issuing secondary obligation bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $20 million, $240,000 as per the tax.
Any other discussion? Mr. Gallagher will be voting now. You have a ball in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Desiree, what is your vote on the bond issue?
I'm in favor.
Thank you.
I'm in favor for refinancing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, moving on, I've got some other things. This is our typical time paid bills. We have general fund bills, we have some capital project fund bills, and some of those relate to the Center Gym Project, we have some of the other things that we did over the summer. We repaid, we sealed asphalt at the pipeline and Westview. Family Consumer Science, we did some upgrades there, and the middle school center, which you saw in the documentary in this presentation. There's food service fund bills, item number five. Item number six are scholarship fund bills, and typically, we...those are the funds that we disburse oftentimes at the times students graduate. They're the money that people that give it to the district for those future scholarships. For some institutions and some students, they prefer that the district disburse the money at the start of the school year, as opposed to when the end was due graduates, as when the student rolls. So, that's why we're still cleaning up a couple of things that we did in May, doing the ways that the ones we're doing now, so that's what number five and number six is about. Item number seven are budget transfers for the month, and number eight is the payroll for the month of August. Item number nine is petty cash, which is what we do at the beginning of your school year. And then there are also three informational items. The treasurer's report has a June 30th and 2019, the revenue summary has of August 2019, unaudited, and the summary of revenue and expenses of August 2019, which are also unaudited. So, I would like to make the motion to approve enhanced items, number three through nine.
Are there any questions? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Sandy. We can now move on to community and intergovernmental relations. That would be Mrs. Reed. Yeah, it's a two-git question. Thank you.
First, we're having a presentation by Mrs. Lynn Schuley from North Hill.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Schuley, and I'm the president of an organization called North Hills Cares. And Dr. Williams had asked me to give a little overview of what we do, and in particular, how we're partnering with the school district. So, a little bit about our organization. It's a nonprofit that was formed by a group of North Hill's parents just last year, in 2018, with the purpose of identifying what might be gaps in care in our area, some issues or problems that if the teachers or the counselors had time to deal with, they could probably take care of, some of the things that the community could take care of instead. We do serve a variety of communities, we're not affiliated with the school district. In fact, we serve multiple school districts across the northern suburbs. But as North Hill's parents, we started here, so a lot of our activities have been in North Hill. And we would describe our area focus as removing barriers to education. So, it looks like we do a lot of kind of unrelated things, but they really fall under that same category of removing barriers to education. So, here's a little bit of information about our relationship with the North Hill School District. The very first thing we did after we formed our organization was to meet with teachers and counselors and principals that we already knew, to find out what their read was on what some of the most important things were. And we found out a whole variety of things, some of them were things that were pretty easy fixes, like the fact that some of the high schoolers couldn't afford the graphing calculators that they needed to take the standardized tests. So, they could use their phone during class, but they weren't allowed to use their phone in the testing environment. And so, that was kind of an easy fix. We bought some calculators, we put them in the library, students can sign them out for a semester and return them for somebody else to use. A couple of the other things required more development of a program. Mrs. Matthew had asked us to take a look at how we could support the English second language students over the summer, to continue to have them work on their English and socialize and spend time with English speakers. So, we did that, but what you're seeing in this picture is one of our board members reading to a group of the McAtar kids at a program that we set up and held at Christ Episcopal Church over the summer. Some of the other requests that we get are more specific to an individual or an individual family. They can't come directly to us, but we take those requests from principals, counselors, social workers, coaches, the people who really know what the situation of the family and the individuals might be, so that we don't have to qualify people. We know if somebody is referred, it's a true need, and if we can help them, we'll try to do that. So, as an example, the picture here that's on the left, under the bullet emergency food, clothing, and supplies, we have students and families who are placed into our district as emergency housing or temporary housing by social services. So, it could be because of an abuse situation or homelessness situation, and they're placed into our district and the kids are registered for school. And basically, the family has nothing when they start, they need everything. So, this photo is an example of a package that one of the young men who was registered at Ross received from us, sort of just a complete couple of weeks of wardrobe, you know, to get them started, including jackets and that sort of thing. So, we'll get a call from one of the social workers that says, "I have this particular family moving in, these are the age of the kids, this is what they need and what they have as their highest priority." And this was a really special request for us. There was a sister there who got a similar kind of package with all of those kinds of things in it, and about an hour after they were delivered, the mom called me. I had thrown my business card in there, and she called me, and she was just sobbing because she couldn't believe that anybody that didn't know them cared about her kids at all. So, she was so appreciative and so almost shocked that in the system that she had been coming out of, she had people who personally cared about her kids. So, she was really thrilled about that. Some of the other things that are on this list are special circumstances that we worked with, with the administrators or with the principals. We have purchased starter equipment for kids who want to go to baby tech but don't have that initial money to spend to get the cosmetology kit or whatever it is, and sometimes it's in the $300 kind of range. For us, that's an obvious thing that you want to take care of. You're giving somebody three years to prepare for a career versus potentially staying in school or dropping out of school and not having a job when they graduate. So, that's an easy fix for us to justify. We have paid summer school fees for students who are seniors who need to graduate in order to get a job or enlist in the military, that they needed to get that taken care of. So, we've done that. And just this year, we have funded for two students who wanted to take CHS Anatomy, Anatomy Physiology, I guess. They were kids who were headed to our medical careers, and part of the requirement of taking that class here is that you pay a $300, I think it's $300 fee to the university that sponsors it. And so, we did that so that they could stay in that class. So, it's those kinds of things that we'll do on an individual basis. In turn, we've gotten a lot of support from the North Hill School District already, all kinds of volunteers from parents, staff, and students. These happen to be from our lunch, photos from our lunch program, but those are all North Hill's folks. At the same program, we had a lot of guidance from Lindsay Raspin and the whole food service staff. They really helped us figure out how to do it and how to do it properly, and I'll talk more about that program in a second. And we've been able to use the district's communication channels, which is really important, because we can offer these services, but we don't have the lists and the reach to get the information out. And if we could do that through the school, as we've been doing, that's really helpful. Some of the other support that has come from the student groups has really been amazing, and particularly the music, in the music areas, we've gotten a lot of support. Arrow, which is the men's ensemble, sort of adopted us as their pet project. So, they had, in the spring, they had a concert that they put together themselves, and they raised $1,000 for us, which was really fantastic. They've also appeared at our Community of Music fundraiser. We had, we had last year, and we are having again this year, one big event for the year that helps raise money and also spread information about our organization and gather volunteers. We call that the Community of Music. So, Arrow and the Chamber Orchestra, or I think maybe they're called the Chamber Strings, appeared last year and are coming back again. And this year, we also have the Jazz Band is going to come and play. So, this is at the Block Northway. And not only these people, but we invite bands and groups from North Allegheny and Shaler and Hampton and Avonworth and Northgate. So, it's really a showcase of different forms of student music. The bottom picture here, these are National Honor Society kids who volunteered. Part of that event is that we collect food items for the backpack initiatives, and so they ran that part of it and we collected over 3,000 items. So, that was a, that was a pretty good thing. Some of the things North Hill Cares does outside of the public school system, one of the things we've really gotten involved with is Community College, CCAC North. A lot of people don't realize that hunger is a problem among college students as well, and in particular, at the community college kind of level, because a lot of these people have families, a lot of these people are trying to work and go to school at the same time. Forty percent of community college students across the country are food insecure. That's a pretty big number. And about one-third of all community college students have kids or have other dependents, sometimes their dependents are their parents or siblings, but one-third of those people have dependents. So, we've done a couple of things for them. They have an on-campus food pantry that we support with food and toiletries. And one of the most fun things we've done is, what's on this picture here, is we do pop-up produce stands. So, we show up with a whole bunch of fresh produce from one of the local wholesalers here, and set up tables and baskets and things, and the kids can come and shop for free and pick the produce that they want, and they get the added bonus of getting to talk to the volunteers about what these items are and how they should cook them when they get home. So, we've had, we've had a lot of success with that. We also have, you may have seen, if you go through Westview, our first Little Free Pantry. It's in the parking lot of the Shoals Bike Store, Bicycle Store. And basically, what a Little Free Pantry is, it's all over the country. It spins off from the Little Free Library kind of concept, that people put books out and people can check them out. But Little Free Pantries have canned goods and dry goods and some toiletry and healthcare kind of items. And it's basically a kitchen cabinet on a pole. It's basically a kitchen cabinet that's unlocked all the time, and it's there with a sign on it that says, "Take what you need and leave what you can." So, the idea is if someone needs something, they take it out and other people in the community fill it back up. And it's working really well, it's been there a year, it's, no one has bothered it, it has tons of use, so it's really kind of an amazing thing. It's not big enough that people can do, get a week's worth of food, but it's really more of an emergency kind of situation in the evening, the food bags are closed, they don't, they don't have something to serve for dinner on the way home, and people will stop by and pick things up. So, that's been really well received, and we have a couple more that will be going in, in areas within the district soon, coming up. We've had several boy scouts want to use that for their Eagle Scout project, is to build one and install it somewhere. So, we're getting some help from that. North Hill Cares is also a partner with a number of other organizations in the Westview Hub. And if you haven't seen the Westview Hub, you really should go and see it. It's an amazing place. It's a library slash community center slash portal for social services, right there in the middle of Westview where a lot of people can walk to it. And it was put together, it's really the brainchild of a guy named Scott Pavlot, who's a North Hill graduate, and he pulled all these organizations together to kind of run it. So, he's had lots of good interaction with the school district, and it would be a good idea to hear from him, too, he has a lot of things that he can share with you. And just as an example of our reach expanding outside of this district, we've just been asked to be in a partnership with Northgate School District. They require their eighth graders to do a service learning project, and so we'll be part of a group of organizations that will both benefit from that and mentor it a little The one program that I'd like to talk more about, that we focused on, it was really our focus this year, was a summer food service program. We started it this summer, we started, we were there from the last day of school until the first day the kids came back to school, so we were there five days a week. If you're not familiar with what this is, a summer food service program, these are under the umbrella of a federal program that provides support to have these kinds of things, and an organization or school or school district can start one. And as long as you follow all the guidelines that you need to follow and that you qualify in terms of need for the kids to have a free lunch, that organization then is reimbursed for the cost of the food. So, you're really putting out the effort and the labor and the space, whatever those things cost, and you get reimbursed for the cost of the food. We didn't have one in our district, there are some other ones that are around, kind of locally, but there weren't any in the North Hills. So, we went ahead and started one, and this was kind of an experiment. One of the reasons why we thought we needed to start it is that statistics show 25% of the students in our district qualify for the National School Lunch Program. So, that's a statistic that's used all the time to compare schools and school districts and how the economy is in those particular kinds of environments, so it's a real common statistic. Twenty-five percent is not a bad number, if you look overall and you look at it compared to city schools, but it does mean that one out of every four of our kids is somewhat food insecure. There's some possibility that there's not enough food in that family. And they qualify based on income levels as compared to the poverty line. So, if they're close to the poverty line, they're going to qualify for this. So, it's the same kids who get to eat lunch for free at school can qualify for the summer program as well. The real accordance of doing that is, during the school year, those, each one of those students can have up to 10 meals a week for free at school, because they can have breakfast and lunch for free. So, when school lets out for the summer, that family loses those 10 meals for every kid that they have in school. And so, the summer food programs are kind of a way to make up, to try to make up for that. They also don't have the Backpack Initiative bags in the summer. And the North Hills District sends home 180 bags a week. So, that's all of that food that they're getting every week, we're not getting anymore in the summer. So, this program is a way to kind of try to correct some of that. So, our program for the first year was held at the North Hills United Presbyterian Church. They donated their space and their commercial kitchen to us to use for the summer, so we didn't have to pay for space. And over the course of the summer, we served 1,200 meals to North Hills kids. We had a little over 60 students signed up, and I was saying kids don't come every day, they have other things that they do some days. So, there were 60 some different kids registered. And any given day, we might have 25 or 30 kids that were serving lunch for. We served a mix of hot and cold meals, but they were meals that met all the nutrition guidelines, and what we really liked was, we had fresh fruit and fresh vegetables every day. So, they got to experience that. And it was staffed 100% by volunteers, so parents, staff from the schools, other local people, people whose kids have gone through North Hill School District and are graduated, a lot of those people came back and volunteered. So, we were able to do a really successful program there. This slide talks about what we're going to do next, and some of the things that you may hear more about. One of the things that we have a concern about is whether or not all of the families who actually would qualify for that free lunch at school, one free breakfast, are applying, because they have to actually take the forms and apply and provide some proof of income and that sort of thing. We think, and the experts will agree, that there's a layer of people, that it's more than 25% of the students that go to the North Hill School District, that their families could qualify for that. And it's because they don't know how to do it, or they're embarrassed to do it, or it's a language barrier to do it. So, that's something that we want to try to work on with the school district. We're also ambitiously looking at opening a second lunch site for next summer, so we would continue the Westview site and open a second site. Under our approval with the Department of Education, we can open as many sites as we want. So, it's a matter of how many volunteers I can find. But I think if we, if we open another site in this district, it'll probably be where the former Seville School building is, somewhere in that area, if we can find a space, particularly a space that will be donated to us, that's likely our next spot. When you hear that our district overall has a 25% participation and qualification for free areas, that really doesn't take into account that it varies a lot around the district, that there are all different spots where there are neighborhoods and communities that really need it more than others. Westview Elementary's number right now is 41% compared to 25% for our whole district. Ten years ago, our whole district was 18%, and Westview was in the 20s. So, you can see that it's becoming more and more of a problem as we have this shift in demographics. We don't have a lot of good statistics since Seville closed, we don't really know around in that area what it would be like, but they were the highest at that time, 10 years ago, at 36%. So, my best guess is they're over 50. Probably half the families there could use that kind of support for their... Probably half the families there could use that kind of support for their meals. So that second lunch site is on our horizon. The other thing we're looking at that will affect kids here in terms of hunger is, we'd like to put together some mechanisms for take-home foods, something like the Backpack Initiative, but that they can get in the summer and where they can get over the holiday break. So I think this holiday break, we're going to have a day where people can sign up and come and get some supplies that they may need to get through that last week before the kids come back to school. And we're working with some partners to try to be able to do it through the summer. So, we always have to talk about how whoever we're talking to can help us, because we need help to do it all. And so certainly, we're always looking for people to donate, and we have multiple ways you can do that. We have a volunteer base, people who have volunteered for various things, whether it's a special event for a couple hours, or it's come to the lunch every day all summer. Because we had some people who did that. So we're always taking those kind of names. And we're always looking for ways to get a bigger audience at our event on December seventh. So you can come and watch three groups from North Hills, but you'll also see musicians from all the other schools in it. It really turns out to be a great night. Can I answer any questions for anyone?
Did a great job, Lou. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm wondering on what your penises is that we need and I need for. Next we have this is a patient in state-wide care advisory. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
She is trying, but she's a little. Oh, you'll comment?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, okay.
We couldn't come to an agreement on the day that I can attend that meeting, so we withdraw that item from the.
Item number two?
One on one now.
Okay.
Item two.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Withdrawn.
I withdraw, I withdraw it?
Yeah. Yeah, he said he couldn't make the name.
Oh, okay.
So we're not going to do an emotional item two, so we can just go on to, I guess I have four, the PSBA slated candidates.
We need to select all the PSB officer candidates and candidates for the position trustee for the PSB insurance.
This was for the PSBA officers, right?
Right.
Okay. Lou, do you have any input on that at all?
I'm, they were noticing the people I met several times, but the PSBA insurance board, I know Kathy Schwul very well, Mark Miller very well.
Okay.
I highly recommend that.
Kathy Schwul and Mark Miller.
It looks like there's only one candidate for each office, is that right?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Lou's going with those?
Yeah.
Those people, I don't.
Yeah, I'm sort of.
Yeah, I think I'll have to order collecting on those.
I had no idea it was going to be four.
But there's not multiple people running for each office.
Right, right, so we have, we have a decision.
Three candidates anyway, so.
Yeah, that's basically it, Kathy. There's only one person running for each office, so it's not like we have to discuss each candidate. Okay. Okay, so I guess you could probably move on to the motion on number five.
I think that is the first time I've been here. Okay. My helper. I mentor.
I'm sorry, I can make the motion. I'm just going to make the motion to approve the collective ballot for the PSBA slated candidates. Okay, is there any discussion on the candidates? All in favor?
I propose.
Motion carries. Sandy, are you still with us?
I'm still here.
Okay, it's you're up for athletics activities.
I'm happy to do it if everyone can hear me.
We can.
Please interrupt me if you can.
Okay.
I have six items in the athletics and activities for consideration. The first one is that the board approved the naming of the middle school gymnasium, the original gymnasium in memory of Moro Woody Woodver. Requested to be by civil teachers, coaches, and community members to name the original middle school gym in memory of Woody Woodver. Board policy seven zero one states that the North Hills School District seeks to honor or memorialize upstanding individuals who have made significant contributions to the school district. Mr. Woodver taught at the school district for forty years. He was a ninth-grade boys' basketball coach for thirty-two years. He was inducted into the Sports Hall of Fame in two thousand and thirteen. He was master of ceremonies and supporter of the North Hills Band Festival for numerous years. He and fellow sixth-grade teachers at Westview Elementary coordinated the sixth-grade field trip to Washington, D.C. for twenty-five years. He and fellow sixth-grade teachers at Westview Elementary coordinated the annual trip to the Veterans Parade. He taught all his male students and athletes karate Thai. He was a beloved teacher, coach, and mentor. The budget impact to the school is only minimal funds cost per signage. My second item is that the board approved Resolution twenty nineteen thirteen recognizing the North Hills Boys Soccer Boosters as official booster organization of the North Hills School District. The Soccer Boosters club is a charitable organization as defined in the local option Small Games of Chance Act and seek to approve as an official booster organization. Then I have three field trip requests. The first is for the varsity and junior varsity baseball teams to attend the Riscan Experience in Myrtle Beach for spring training. The date of the trip, on March eighteenth through twenty-second. The student athletes commit two days of school with no cost to the district. The softball, varsity and junior varsity softball teams have a field trip request to attend the Riscan Experience at Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. This trip would be March eighteenth to March twenty-second. Student athletes will miss three days of school and again, with no cost to the district. The competitive, competition cheerleading squad has a field trip request to compete at the UCA National High School Cheerleading Championships in Orlando, Florida. This trip is February sixth through February tenth. The student athletes will miss two and a half days of school with no cost to the district. My last item is a request for the board to approve the creation of an eighth-grade American history club committed by middle school teacher Larry Doran Camp and Jill Welch, who would be the sponsors. The purpose of the club is to enrich students in their appreciation, application, and understanding of American history and civic topics. These teachers plan to go beyond class content with a focus on local artifacts, locations, and experiences to enrich participants' understanding and stories of America. This club would include five meeting on topics applicable to current research trends, trends and events, possible weekend meetings at the historic sites, possible field trips to historic Philadelphia pending administration of the goal, and organizing building-wise historic civic events such as the Moquelet. There would be no budgetary impact. Superintendent recommends that I so move that the board approve athletes and activities items one through six.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
I wonder who that might be?
This may come as a shot to the board and Mrs. Rager, but I'm voting no on the field trips for three, four, and five, I believe it is. There's no academic benefit whatsoever.
My other comment.
Please.
This is not scientific evidence, but I just wanted to say that I've been doing a lot of carpoolsing with eighth graders in who are in marching band, and they are all seem very excited about the history club. I've heard them talking about it a lot. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of interest in that.
I would like to say if they need an action shop for Orlando in February.
I would like to make one more comment than you, we just want to share. Patrick Webber shared the team two days with us last very recently. And all of our athletic teams are very well, everybody is around either at or above three point oh. So, I mean, you know, yes, they're in the system school, but, you know, I really feel that our student athletes do work hard and they do their homework. And so, I'm comfortable with letting them have some of these co-curricular experiences which really are, you know, important through the development of the whole student. I mean, we really want to educate the whole student. And, you know, certainly we need the classroom education, certainly that's why I'm here, but the co-curricular activities are important to that. So, I'm going to respectfully disagree with my colleague, Mr. Burnett.
They can, they can do the same thing in Pittsburgh.
So, but, you know, I may have, I mean, we may go differently if those GPAs were as not as they are. And I really think it's a tribute to our students and that they are learning how to, you know, balance the demands on their time.
All right, so we don't know, Mr. Burnett's answer. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We've got, thank you. Thank you, Sandy. Under Beatty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Under Beatty Career Center, Mr. Kelly, we don't have anything under there unless you have something you might want to add?
No.
Nothing? Okay, thank you. We can now move on to personnel actions, and that would be Mrs. Bay.
Personnel items are discussed in today's session. Therefore, the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve personnel items one through three.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. Motion carries. Thank you. We don't have anything under legislative, Mr. Nudie, unless you need something like that.
Have a comment on the Cyrus Charter of School funding. The House just returned today, the Senate returns tomorrow. However, in the summer, Dr. Miranda Manorino and I met with Valerie Gatos, who was a member of the House Education Committee. And Dr. Miranda, Manorino gave her an awful lot of good information. She was not totally aware of the whole situation, even though she was on our side to begin with. And we met with, met with Representative Craig Sonny, who is the Chair of the Education Committee. He is on our side. I think one of the problems, and I think both in the Senate and the House, is the fact that there is this attitude that you have to have free choice in education. So that's going to be the stumbling block for both of the, getting both of them a favorable vote in the House. I think they will get the SB thirty-four out of committee. And they will get the H, H R five twenty-six out of committee. Getting it to the floor may be the next obstacle.
And if it gets to the floor, we're going to be asking everybody to start faxing, texting, emailing, calling, doing whatever you do to get to your legislatures to try to get that passed.
If it gets to the floor, it's a hot non-ballot right now that will pass.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kelly, it looks like you've got a plethora of things here. I'm going to send out for some food while you're on here.
Okay, thank you. Policy. Let's elaborate the point, perhaps by way of explanation, that the policy committee, there is a policy committee, myself, Mr. Nudie, Mrs. Gazero, Superintendent. We are constantly looking at policies and seeing which one needs to be revised or changed, which in that nature. We also get a great deal of info from PSBA, so to answer to the earlier question. A lot of the recommendations come from PSBA, and their legal department is looking at that superintendent. If he has any questions regarding the policy, before they have the policy committees, we'll discuss it with our supervisors. So the policy committee will look at it, and then there are two readings. The first reading, and we've got two this evening. Our first reading, policy seven zero seven, considering school facilities, and policy seven one one, the use of school by flight. So this will, these have been posted, so therefore I would like to make a motion that the policy items that I just mentioned be added to the October third reading. The October third reading, that would be the second reading for them. I think I should have made a.
Second. Okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Any discussion?
All in favor?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Approve. Motion carries.
Then we have a series of second readings, and these would be policies that have already been ready to discuss once, and we've posted them. Incidentally, the policies are all posted on our website. I have to, I believe they are under the School Board Hold-on Menu and this is policy. So you can access these at any point in time. So for the second reading, and this will be approved after the receiving, policy zero zero two, authority and power. Policy zero zero three, functions. Policy zero zero five, organization, and those are full revisions. Our second reading also is a new policy one twenty-one. Title one, compatibility, comparability of services. Second reading for policy two two zero, student expression, distribution, and posting of materials. Second reading for policy three three zero, family and medical leave, administrative employees. Four three zero, family and medical leave for professional employees. Second reading, revision to policy five three zero, family and medical leaves for classified employees. Second reading for policy seven one two, crowdfunding. And policy, second reading for policy nine one three, non-school organization groups and individuals. Since this is the second reading, I would move that we approve policy items four through thirteen.
Second.
I have a question. I think, I have a question. Could you just clarify, Mr. Kelly, policy two twenty, because that was what we had the question about? That was at the recommendation of, of PSBA? Is that one of those policies?
Yes, that, that's, yeah, that's what I was referring to earlier. In fact, PSBA has the input act of us superintendent for any of these items.
Thank you.
Any four votes?
Ms. Gazero, did you have a?
No, um, master class, that's the same question I was going to ask. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry.
Any four votes? All in favor?
Aye.
I have one question.
Approve.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
That's it?
Next time you have to ask, you'll all pass. I'm sorry, I disappeared.
Should we just adjourn the meeting?
We're now moving on to support. Support services, Mr. Burnett, are you ready?
Yes. The first item is a couple bits for security cameras. I think we have two bits, Office Depot and Diagnostino Electric. And we're going to be over that.
Security camera bit, I guess. The total bit is forty thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars. That's for a camera, hanging.
Yeah, the security, security cameras.
Indoor and outdoor.
Indoor and outdoor, right. I guess all across the tents is current.
Was this being, being paid by a grant?
Part of it is being paid by a grant. Four of them is.
It's being offset. It looks like one over half of it.
Oh, I see, that's not the bottom.
Right. Then the second item is the disposal of some equipment that we no longer use, some risers for coral. And I think we've had, Dr., I'm sorry, Mr. Hollis has asked people if they'd be interested, local churches and other organizations that'd be interested in some of the information. And some of the local churches have taken the risers for their coral performances in church. So that's nice. We will be back to the community, here's some activity to the community. So the superintendent recommends an ISO move. We approve support service items one and two.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, before we close the meeting, is there anybody who wants to address the board on agenda items? There being none, I will make a motion to adjourn. So, the adjourn, thank you.